It's closed.
It says it.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide the behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. We're going to stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature, under God, in the visible, the free, and the just. Please pause for a moment. Thank you very much. We have a motion to adopt the agenda for the seat. A motion from Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second to file. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. This order, first thing on our agenda this evening, 2.5 is special recognition, a resolution for Captain Jeff Brown. We're going to gather down here at the podium. I'll load. Be ready. You don't have to.
Someone needs to say.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Everybody in back too? There's a mic squeal, I can't stand it. Can y'all hear me? Okay. All right, on behalf of Rappahannock County Public Schools, resolution honoring school resource Dare Officer Captain Jeffrey Brown. Whereas Captain Jeffrey Brown was the first school resource and Dare Officer for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia, and whereas school resource officers work with school administrators, security staff, and faculty in developing comprehensive safety plans to ensure schools are a safe place for students to learn, and whereas Dare Officers educate young students on the importance of saying no to drugs and alcohol, and whereas Captain Jeffrey H. Brown has made a long-lasting impact on all the individuals he has encountered by dedicating countless hours ensuring their safety and well-being, and whereas he was a positive influence for students, staff, and the community who he vowed to protect, honor, and serve, whereas the support he has provided students will positively impact generations for years to come, and now therefore be it resolved, the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Captain Jeffrey H. Brown for his service to the students, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Being further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made a part of the permanent records of the county and that a copy of the resolution be presented to the family of Captain Jeffrey H. Brown by the Rappahannock County School Board. It's dated in August, but today is the day. On behalf of all of us, thank you for the service and the pleasure of knowing your father and your husband. He was truly a great man. Thank you. Can Musa come over here? Anybody else? All of them?
Yes.
Come down.
Thank you very much. I'm glad y'all could be here. I have one story I wanted to share with you before we get back to our seats. And this is it. I, over the time that I've served on the board, I got to know Captain Brown basically in this context. And there was one particular thing, one thing I just want to share with you that was very special. Every year, we would have something called the Senior Banquet. Well, it's not for seniors. It was for the seniors of the high school. And there was a banquet held in this, what do we call this?
Con.
The con. And immediately after the eating was done, everyone assembled into this room where Captain Brown would have set up an old-timey slideshow machine. Okay? And in that old-timey slideshow machine, he would have pictures of his students from the time they were in first grade and also in high school, all made up and organized. And the students were so looking forward to this thing. It's all they could talk about. And they so enjoyed it when it was happening. I don't know how many of you were ever in here for this event, but it had a huge impact. Some of you might have been students, weren't you? And you saw your pictures flashing by. Everybody was waiting for their picture and the rest of the students laughed. It was a, why do I share that particular time? To me, it is a testimony to his love for the student and a relationship that he formed with them, their love for him. It was, it was a precious thing and valued thing. We're grateful for his presence in this place. Make sure you do that. However, I handled telling the story. It was a beautiful moment that I saw many years in a row and a very diligent worker at it. Yep. Thank you all for coming. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our agenda. The report of the school board ladies on campus. It's been fun joining us. Hey, campus, when you get there, could you be mind adjusting that mic so that it could pick you up better? Can you try it out and see if people can hear you? You might need to pull it down here.
Is anyone here?
No, is it on?
It's off.
Is that right?
Yeah, we tried. It was making noise when I was handling it, but... There we go.
It's not very loud.
Yeah, you're in a totally different place. Like a rock star.
So I'm gonna start singing. Okay. Members of the school board and Dr. Grimsley, good evening. The first month of school has been fantastic. Students at high school have participated in classes and events at a level that we have not experienced in the pandemic. Thank you for creating the environment where students can feel safe, secure, and learn the fun way. As a senior, it feels good when I walk down the hallway and teachers from my early year in high school taking interest in me and my peers. Our teachers care on a very deep level. I can only hope that when I go off to college, I will interact with just as many teachers as I've had in high school. We have enjoyed many activities so far this school year. In August, 46 juniors and seniors were selected and trained to be the senior peer mentors for our eighth graders. This all-day training took place at Murray's Mountain Lodge. Our big peer mentor reveal party will be held September 21st. It's here that eighth graders will meet their peer mentors. The theme this year is outer space. Our football season comes right back on home in tailgate parties. The freshman class will be hosting this Friday's tailgate party with fried Oreos, fried pickles, and candy. Okay. We will also be honoring our local law enforcement. We had our Student Council Association elections. Our SDA officers are President Liberty Self, Vice President Savannah Loving, Secretary Emma Brown, Historian Emma Jenkins, Treasurer Andrew, and Treasurer Eugene Gardner. There are, and they are ready to kick off another great school year. We had our pride kick-off event where students selected their pride clubs this year. The broadcasting club and youth club won the pride challenge event and will get to design their own club t-shirts. Our fourth club day will be September 30th. Finally, the class of 2022 held the first ever senior sunrise in the beginning of their final school year, final year of high school. The event was well-attended in tons of ways. The only area, the one area where I think the school board could review is the number of drills we had. It seems that we have drills once for twice a week. I know that these drills are important. They are often, but they often interfere with the flow of class and it's hard for students to get that contract. Just let us know what you can do. Thank you so much for your attention tonight.
And are there any questions? Order in the seat. The number of drills, hmm.
Does state need a date?
State needed. Call your congressmen.
No response.
All right, thank you for the response.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing that. Sounds like a good year ahead. Next thing on the agenda is donations.
Jimmy Swenler donated $100 to the junior class. The following donations are made to the FFA in memory of William Richard Settle. Tom Massey donated $100. Joe Paul donated $200. Gary and Diane Robinson, $50. Emerson and Joyce Bennett, $50. Charlotte Cutro donated $25. George and Karen Williams, $100. Charlie and Alice Butler, $50. Edward and Gail Conley, $100. Tony Beats, $100. Jared, $50. Janice Carey, $250. William H. Emmer and Son, $250. Tiffany and Joseph Myers, $100. James Fletcher, $1,000. Patricia Lohner, $50. And Teddy and Jody Rumel, $100.
Thank you. It's interesting, the school board has to vote to accept donations. Like, what are we gonna do? But Mrs. Johnson, former board member, would always say with a letter of thanks. And I just want to make sure you know, even though we're gonna pass this in a consent agenda, that we always return a letter of thanks to folks that have made contributions. Moving on, is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the August 9th meeting?
Certainly.
You have a motion from Ms. Biden, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. This order, I did have opportunity to review the bills and make some careers with Dr. Grimsley to clear a few things up, but they're in good order. At this time, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Certainly. We have a motion, Ms. Burus, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Biden, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. This order, Dr. Grimsley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to keep the recognitions going with a very special presentation of our students who scored a perfect 600 on the SOLs last year. Remember, we did not celebrate this last year as we did not have SOL tests the year before due to COVID. And I cannot emphasize how important and special it is to score a perfect 600 given the educational landscape that these students have had the last couple of years. So it's a quite an accomplishment. So what we're going to do is I will read the name. And if you are here, students, as I read your name, please make your way over to the door over here and up onto the stage. And Chairman Mills will give you your certificate and shake your hand. And then we'll ask you to stay right here up on stage, okay? So we can get a nice picture with all of you, okay? Sound good? All right, first, for a perfect score in the Great Greek Remeind Test, Evangeline McCracken. For a perfect score on the U.S. and Virginia History Doma Roman, Josh Keating Losiowski. For a perfect score on the fifth grade Science, Kyle Deo. For a perfect score on Virginia Studies, Kayden Kidwell. For a perfect score on the eighth grade Writing Test, Mason Homer. Also a perfect score on eighth grade Writing is Carmen Pond. Finally, a perfect score on the end-of-course 11th grade Writing SOL, May Cuba. All to hold open your certificates. You should be so proud of these parents who got a great one. Well done. Well done. All right, we're not finished yet. So, also important to be a teacher and have a perfect score for all the students, junior class, that take the SOL is quite an accomplishment as well. So we have some teachers that we need to recognize as well. And I don't think, I know all of them could not be here, but I'll read their names anyway. So for ninth, for the Fall Geometry Test, Sally Shackelford. For the Fall Math 8 Test, Scott Stevens. For both the Fall and the Spring U.S. Virginia History, Mr. Tim Stockdale. For Biology, we have Greg Chekai. For Algebra 2, Dave Mazer.
Carlos wants to take a credit for all of those. Take a picture.
You can hold both of them. There you go. Very nice.
All right.
That's quite, quite a lot of names for the situation that we've been through, the size of our school. And it really is a testament to the level of commitment to excellence and academic success that our teachers and our principals and students have had over the past couple of years despite the challenges. At this time, 4.2, we talked about this at the last board meeting. Every meeting, we are going to alternate between schools for a remarkable spotlight where the principals will bring to you a spotlight from their schools. So I'm going to invite Mr. Carlos Stewart to the podium.
Thank you.
You'll probably have to hold that right up and see very now.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you so much, Stockton, thank you.
Can everybody hear him when he speaks?
No.
Can you hear him?
I can tell from the physical, they can't hear. Do you want my children to hear?
Um, I'm fine, man.
Hey, I can tell you what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Thinking if you come right here, everybody will be able to hear you.
I see you, okay.
Ed see. Do you mind showing up here?
I'm sorry about the green.
That'd be great. Sorry about the light.
So we can move that one down a little bit. Have their chain together.
Thank you, thank you, Jane. I just want to make sure everybody's home. So make sure everybody's here. Have a great evening. One, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
I think this rules look better than I do, though.
He would agree.
Mr. Board Chairman, Madam Superintendent, Madam Clerk, members of the cabinet, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This school year has only been sessioned for 24 days. When you think of the totality of the school year, that doesn't seem like much time at all. In those brief 24 days, our students have engaged in rigorous and relevant instruction facilitated by a talented cadre of teachers, some names that you heard this evening. They participated in an array of activities via our Profile of a Graduate Initiative, our social promotional wellness program via Pride, co-director activities such as band, art, FFA, and of course athletics. Our students have also spearheaded service learning projects that benefit families and organizations throughout the community. One such event, Mr. Chairman, was noted in the Band Rap newspaper recently. The Profile of Graduate Team sponsored a field trip for juniors and seniors to the James Madison University in Harrisonburg on September 9th. The students were treated to an awesome tour of the campus, dormitories, lunch in the main cafeteria, and participated in question-and-answer sessions hosted by the Chief Senior Education Officer, Daisy Goconhour. If that name sounds familiar to you, he is the guy that had more energy than me. I met him and I found that out quickly. He was a counselor here at the high school and he did pass on my best regards to our division superintendent and to this board. He misses you guys. The entire team at James Madison University was outstanding to us. The Profile of a Graduate Team works hard to provide experiences like this coupled with many other experiences that enhance the student experience here at the high school. This evening, I'd like to highlight the marching band in the Theater Arts Program. The Fine Arts and the program, the Fine Intermountain Arts, rather, are critical to the part of the school that we want to enhance for students. As we as a school division take special care to build the foundations that will soon be our Fine Arts Academy, our band and theater arts program will be the cornerstone of that future initiative. Ms. Paige, our new band director, Ms. Met Sealy, one of our new drama directors who also serves as our instructional resource and gifted specialist, as well as Ms. Marina Hope, our social intern, together have brought energy, life, and love to our students. These ladies have reimagined the performing arts experience such that we can reach and involve more students. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, I am pleased to report that the Rappahannock County High School is fully accredited and has even exceeded state averages in key content areas. We have some areas that we want to improve across the board regarding academic performance and attendance so that the high school can truly be the darling of the Commonwealth. On behalf of a grateful faculty and staff, I want to thank each and every one of you for your support and more importantly, your encouragement. That concludes my remarks, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Board Chairman, for this evening. Next month, the Division Superintendent has directed me to prepare a presentation for our continuous school improvement plan. I look forward to sharing with you the nuances of how we plan to achieve excellence this year. Are there any questions I may answer this time?
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you that at our band department, I talked to several parents of teenagers. We felt so much calmer after speaking with, having our senior meeting with graduate. It's nice to hear and really good. People are excited and it's really helping families to prepare.
It's an initiative that this board approved many years ago through our superintendent and it has paid dividends in so many ways. So again, it's fine.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks for coming up so we could all hear you.
I appreciate it.
I knew it was something that nobody's gonna wanna miss. It's hurting out for a microphone.
Oh, they don't wanna see me. They'd much rather see your presentation. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Exciting presentation. So for the accreditation update, I'm going to ask Ms. Karen Ellis to actually come up to the same seat so people can hear your presentation well enough. And I know this seems like maybe not such an exciting topic, but it really is. We are so excited to share this story with you about the academic success of our students and teachers. And as you just saw, we had some recognition, but Ms. Ellis is going to paint that picture and tell this story based on the data. So thank you, Karen. Karen is our Academic Services Coordinator.
Can everyone hear me okay? All right, so before I get started, I'd like to request from our superintendent that I don't have to follow Mr. Stewart again. One, because he's a very elegant speaker, but number two, because he kind of stole some of my thunder. But that's okay. So, good evening to the board. I, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Karen Ellis, Academic Services Coordinator for Rappahannock County Public Schools. And I'm pleased to bring you an update on our school quality profile and accreditation status for our CPS. So I'm very pleased to announce, or be the second person to announce tonight, that our preliminary data indicates that we are fully accredited at both schools. Schools are in levels for each school quality indicator. And there are five academic indicators that we'll talk about tonight in the areas of math, English, and science. Math and English received a Math and English receive a rating based on overall performance on SOL assessments, as well as a rating for achievement gaps based on subgroups, which I will discuss in further detail in a few minutes. As you can see on the slide, the elementary school has received a Level 1 rating in all academic achievement areas, as designated by the color green. The high school has received a Level 1 in achievement for, overall achievement for English, math, and in science, and a Level 2, they would be the yellow achievement gap in English and in math. And that indicates that they are approaching making progress toward meeting benchmark levels. They receive a Level 2 status in both English and math in achievement gaps, and again, I'll go into further detail about how all of that works in just a few minutes. I also want to note that there is another indicator, um, an indicator for chronic absenteeism that was waived for accreditation this year. It did not impact accreditation, however, it is still reported. The high school has two more indicators, which include graduation and completion index and the dropout rate. Both areas, we are meeting benchmarks that have a state and receive a Level 1 rating. So again, that is what this report is showing you. Those schools are fully accredited this year. So, there are many areas that I'd like to highlight tonight from this data. Uh, these are what I'm gonna call the glows, because they stand out as shining examples of how well those schools have performed. Keep in mind that when I refer to the previous year tonight, I am referring to the data from the 2018-19 school year. Due to COVID, due to closures, and in the year that we were hybrid, some students were virtual. Uh, the previous year comparison is actually 18-19, which is pre-pandemic. So just keep that in mind. And, um, so let's go through the list. The first one, I think it's worth mentioning a third time, that we are fully accredited at both schools. Major accomplishment, given our first year back, it's normal last year. At the elementary school, um, like I showed on the previous slide, they are in a Level 1 for all academic indicators. They met the benchmarks in all subgroups, all areas for math and English and science. Also, the elementary school, um, I just mentioned that they did meet the benchmarks for all subgroups. I'll talk about subgroups in a minute, and we'll actually see numbers and tease out and kind of look at those in detail, but the elementary school met all benchmarks. They showed improvement in all subgroups for English from the previous year. And again, I want to remind you that previous year was pre-pandemic 18-19. So all subgroups in English, which is basically the reading test at the elementary school, showed improvement, especially our students with disabilities. And I will highlight that again later when I show you some numbers, but I did want to note that improvement. Next bullet, because of that improvement, our CES improved to a Level 1 from last year's data compared to the Level 2 rating they received in the Academic Achievement English in 2018-19. So quite an accomplishment. And next one, at the high school, much to celebrate, the high school is at a Level 1 for all English and math subgroups, except for the one subgroup that we'll talk about just a little bit, students with disabilities in the achievement gap for English and math. That's what gave them an overall rating of a Level 2. All other subgroups performed at Level 1. At the high school, there was also an 82% pass rate in reading overall. So 82% of the students who took a reading assessment at the, SLL assessment at the high school, passed at the 400 or higher, and, um, that's against the state average of 73%. Yes, it is. At the high school, all subgroups, every subgroup, and I'll show you that in detail in just a minute, exceeded the state average pass rate for reading last year. And at the high school, math, um, there was a 74% overall pass rate, which compared to the state average of 66%. Again, first year coming back from closures and COVID. Okay, so now, on the next slide, here are areas to focus on this year. Areas where we're gonna shine a light, did deep, um, Mr. Stewart alluded to the school improvement plan that he'll be presenting next month. Both schools are working on one, and this information plays a piece of that clinic. It plays into that clinic. Areas to focus on this year, I want to call these our growths. Again, I want to note that any reference to the previous year is referring to 2018-19, and whenever I reference a three-year average, that would be data from 2017-18, 18-19, and then 21-22 last year. So it seems like a long time ago, but that's what we're using for three-year averages due to COVID. Two major areas to focus on this year, um, at the elementary school, the two areas. One is our student with disabilities in the area of math. I do want to note that overall, we're at a Level 1% over three-year average. Um, that benchmark is 70%. We're at 69.81%, which rounds up to 70, but we're right at that 70% benchmark. So we definitely want to shine our light on there, put some things in place, and see some growth in that area. The current year, last year, was down, um, it was a Level 3 at 63.89% from the previous year, which again is 2018-19, where we were at 75%. The other area at the elementary school is science. Um, again, I want to note that the elementary school is overall at a Level 1, but for last year, that's based on the three-year average. For last year, uh, they had a 64.91% pass rate, and that's down from 2018-19, which was right around 90%. It's also important to note that the state has seen a dramatic decline in science scores as well. The state average was also right at 65% pass rate. And I just want to make mention that students at the elementary school, they take one SOL test. They take that test in fifth grade, and it covers fourth and fifth grade material. So students taking that test last year in the fifth grade, they either participated in the hybrid model, which was two days at school, two days virtual for the fourth grade instruction, or they were 100% virtual. So that fourth grade instruction was definitely impacted for fourth grade, and I think that's likely why it showed up at the state end level last year for fifth grade. At the high school, the two areas, um, we really want to shine our light on and focus. Both above are students with disabilities. So overall, um, the high school is accredited and they earn that Level 2 rating. And the reason it was a Level 2 was because our students with disabilities, they were at a Level 3 for English and for math. And for English, a little different at the high school. It's not just a reading assessment. There's actually a writing test, and then there's the reading test, and all those scores get put together. And we'll look at some numbers in a minute, but our students with disabilities is definitely an area of focus. And at the, in that math, they also performed 61.5, 4% is the three-year average. For math, the benchmark is 70%. Again, um, that is down from a Level 1 status that they had in 2018-19. Again, we can talk about a lot of factors. I think, um, the pandemic plays a big piece of that too, with gaps in instruction. But definitely two areas that are focused, that we're gonna focus on at the high school this year.
How many students, like what percentage of our population are we talking about in this level of support?
Dr. Johnson, you hold with that?
Um, sorry, we're at 15%.
Okay. 15% of our students. And in such a small school setting, I mean, we're talking a handful of students.
Yes.
Sway the numbers even a little.
What, what student is a high percentage?
Exactly. Yes, good point. Um, the next, on the next slide, now I'm gonna take just a minute and go through by subject area and show you a lot of numbers and try to kind of make sense of some of these numbers. Uh, first, we're gonna talk about math. As we delve into the numbers, a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. If you see a TS in the table, that indicates that a subgroup is too small, and therefore they're exempt from calculations for accreditation. Um, accreditation levels are decided based on the number of students who pass the test, plus recovery and growth for students in grades 3 through 8, and only for math and English. So there's a growth and recovery piece of that that we'll talk about tonight. Growth measures are determined by the state, and once students, once students are given a fall growth assessment, which our students just recently took in the last couple of weeks at both schools, students can demonstrate growth based on either the previous year's SOL score in reading or math, and then, or based on a fall growth assessment compared to their spring assessment. And then we talk about recovery tonight. I just quickly want to mention what that is. Recovery is when a student failed the previous year's SOL assessment, but then they end up passing the next year in reading or math. We call that recovery, and that goes toward our accreditation as well. Uh, so for instance, let me give you an example. If a sixth, if a sixth grade student takes a math assessment this year, and they had not passed their fifth grade assessment, but they passed their sixth grade, then we get what we call recovery credit for accreditation. So that helps us out too when that happens. Uh, so if we look at this table for math, I know there are a lot of numbers. Here are these subgroups that I talked about. Each subgroup is assigned a level and a Level 1, 2, or 3 based on their performance. Um, I'm showing you the state flat pass rate, how many students took a math test divided, I'm sorry, how many students passed divided by how many took the test, as well as the pass rate. We'll start with the elementary school. And then that fourth column that says, "Our CES includes growth and recovery involved", that is where we're looking for our accreditation. That would be pass rates, growth, recovery. All put together. Are we back? Um, so our CES, when we look at that table, they receive, like I said earlier, they receive a Level 1 rating for all subgroups, because all subgroups met that 70% benchmark. And as I stated earlier, I really want to pull up those students, um, with disabilities. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I kind of jumped ahead a little bit. So they all met that benchmark, but as I stated earlier, students with disabilities is an area of growth. We, they are at a Level 1, we are at a Level 1 at elementary school, but if you look at that three-year average, it's 69.81%, which again, that rounds up to 70, it keeps us at that Level 1. But we definitely want to put some things in place, areas to grow this year to show improvement for that subgroup. Then when we look at the high school, I've given you, um, pass rates, and then that next column over toward the right second to the end, it says, "RCHS includes growth and recovery." RCHS, as I mentioned earlier, that's where I got that Level 1. Each subgroup received a Level 1, except for those students with disabilities. That's where, um, that subgroup received a Level 3. So overall, that rating became a Level 2 for the high school. And so again, that's an area that I mentioned earlier that we definitely want to put some things in place through our school improvement plan. There've been many conversations about strategies and goals for that group. When we look at the next slide, we do the same thing for reading. Now, the benchmark for accreditation is 75%. Couple of things to keep in mind, like math, accreditation can be met in two ways, either on the current year, what we call the current year, but it's really last year's data, or the three-year average, recovering growth or factors in third through eighth. However, reading and writing at the high school, I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second, they're combined. So when we get to the high school, I'll talk about how that works for accreditation. But looking at the data, if you look through, um, our CES, based on accreditation, that would be the fourth column in bold that says, "Our CES includes growth and recovery." RCHS received a Level 1, and this is, this is really impressive. All based on the current year, last year's data. Um, they received a Level 1 for all subgroups. As a matter of fact, all subgroups showed improvement in reading when compared to the previous year, which if you remember what I said, was pre-pandemic 2018-19. Every subgroup showed improvement. Pretty impressive. 78.38%, this is what I promised, we looked at this number. 78.38%, 38% of our students with disabilities passed or showed growth on the reading SOL assessment last May, compared to 51.52% in 2018-19. So because of that improvement, our CES improved their overall achievement gap, back to that form with the green and yellows. They improved the achievement gap for English. They went from a Level 2 in 2018-19 to a Level 1, based on 21-22 data. And the high school, um, going toward the end, the second to the, um, last column that's in bold, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the high school had reading pass rates above the state average in all subgroups last year. 82% of the students passed the reading assessment compared to 73% of students across the state. When looking at that column though, with the growth and recovery, I just want to point out that these percentages, when we look at accreditation, they put writing and reading together, and I have writing on the next slide, so we can kind of take a look at that in just a minute. But those percentages in bold for our CHS are reading and writing combined to come up with accreditation for English. RCHS met the benchmark for all subgroups, except for students with disabilities, which again is a focus this year, and that's what kept us from a Level 1 status overall. So it definitely an area to focus on for growth and improvement there. The next slide is where I, I pulled out the writing. So I think when you're looking at the big picture, it's important to tease out the reading and the writing. So the reading, I've given some pretty impressive numbers for the high school. And in writing, um, it's important to note, there is no writing test that, uh, for this, at the state level for accreditation for elementary. We give a, a local assessment to kind of monitor achievement and progress in the fifth grade, but there is none for accreditation. But at the elementary, I mean, I'm sorry, at the high school, they take a writing test in March, um, and I think that is an area across the board, not only at the local level, but at the state level, is that area of writing. If you look, um, at our students with disabilities, 24% of our students pass the writing SOL. And remember, they get put in with the reading, and then that gives you an overall level for accreditation. And I, I want to note that at the state level, it's also 24%, but we know we can do better, and that is an area of focus across the board, not just where they take that writing test in eighth and 11th grade. We've had many conversations. This starts early, just like you wouldn't teach your child to read in eighth grade and then say, here's the first time you're gonna take an eighth grade assessment at the state level. We, we don't just teach it in eighth grade. It really is a school initiative across the board at all grade levels. And so we have some ideas and things to put in place for writing. Uh, the next slide is history. Believe it or not, um, history is not a school quality indicator for accreditation, but I do want to share, because we do have students that take an SOL assessment in history, um, at the end of the year, or at the end of the semester, because students must earn one verified credit towards diploma requirements at the high school. So, um, our CES, there are two opportunities for a history test. There's the Virginia Studies in fourth grade, civics in seventh. And then at the high school, almost all students are trying to get that verified credit through world history in ninth grade, and then students that aren't successful, they could be taken a U.S. history later to try to get that verified credit. But it's a limited number of test takers. It's not like reading and math, um, where every student, third through eight, is taking it, and then again in 11th. You're talking, like you said, numbers. Just a very few students can sway those percentages either way.
And remember, when we took out those initial history as verified credits, then the number of those decreased. We knew that the further along students got into high school, you're having students take those tests who may not have been so successful earlier. So not only is the denominator dropping, but it's also, you know, students who may not have been as successful, so, um, it's pretty impressive what we saw earlier with the perfect pass rate.
Yes, it was, yes. And then finally, um, science. Again, we have very limited number of students that test in science. Science is a school quality indicator, but it's just the overall pass rate. There's no growth or recovery built into that, because they don't take that consecutive years to measure that. Um, subgroups are reported, but we're looking at that final pass rate for accreditation. And if you look at the bottom of the RCHS column, where there's an 83%, 83.05, and then at the high school, 86.34%, we're doing well for our three-year average, um, very well. But again, just keep in mind that at the elementary school level, I've already mentioned that fifth grade covers fourth and fifth, so I, I told you about the challenges presented there with, um, COVID and the hybrid model, and how those students receive instruction. At the eighth grade level, when they take that test, that covers three years, six, seven, and eighth grade material. So if you were in eighth grade or taking that test last year, in sixth grade, your year was abruptly cut off in March of '20. Your instruction stopped for sixth grade. You didn't receive all of it. In seventh grade, you were either hybrid, two days virtual, two days in person, or perhaps 100% virtual. We already know the impact that had on education. I don't think many people would argue that face-to-face, um, it, face-to-face is the best option. So those students last year in eighth grade, they had a major disruption to instruction and pacing in their instruction. And I think that's why we see the decline. Last year, 65% of students, percent of students passed, which at the state level is the exact same pass rate. So I think there's an effect. So I think those effects were felt across the state.
And added to that, in science, we also had a change of standards in the crosswalk. That happened too. So in that case, we always see an implementation difference, new standards, regardless of the pandemic. So we had that on top of, you know.
Yes, exactly. The gaps in instruction as well. So I hope I've made some sense of this data. I hope I haven't muddied the waters more. Sometimes I tend to do that too. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. There's lots to be proud of, but there's also still work to be done, and we know that. I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have. But again, thank you for allowing me to present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. And it was just so amazing during the summer for waiting for the Leadership Academy and waiting for our SOL scores because this was going to be our new baseline. Like, okay, let's see what those impacts were. I just did not be more proud of our folks and our teachers and our administrators for this baseline. I'm so thrilled that this is where we're starting out to come out of the pandemic. There's a lot of work to do for sure, but I'm feeling a lot better where we can be in our comprehensive plan, those goals that we set out. It's not so unachievable.
And the ability to use the data to identify next steps.
Okay, thank you. And it's time for any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is just a courtesy item we have every year from the Food Service Department to share the bid awards for our food service. So for this school year, those vendors are listed there on the slide. Any questions about those? It looked like the same. Yes.
These are parents.
Okay. Thank you Food Service Department for all your hard work. And the last item is the RCPS Well Check. I'm sorry, I did have one question about the food. So are we currently getting apples from tortilla now? Or in season, not quite yet? Okay, I'll ask them. Yeah, because it's really awesome to see such local apples when they come in. I agree. We want to use local as much as possible. And I know that they meant to be 15. It's working directly with Food Service quite a lot to hopefully increase local procurement as well. All right, Well Check, there we go. All right, so the Well Check, September 13th. Across the state, still pretty stable. Our last rappahannock, rappahannock health district data showed here and there a few of those days where had a spike in cases. But overall, hospitalizations, deaths are down in the state and in the locality. We're still using the CDC Community Transmission Metrics to determine what level that we are at. Every week, we get an update from our Health Director and Public Health Coordinator using these metrics. This is as of September 9th, which was their last update where we are. So BAC here is low, rappahannock is medium, but the other three of the five on the area are in the high transmission. We are still using the new VDH directives for schools. So at this time, really quarantine is not happening unless we have a confirmed positive case. And then you're asked to isolate for five days. So that's what we're using. We do still send out a general exposure notice to those. So that, the question I frequently get is like, oh my gosh, we must be exploding with COVID. I get all these general exposure notices. And I myself can speak to that. I have three children, and I think I got 12 in like one day. Like, oh my goodness. But one positive case can trigger six or seven general exposures, depending on what that student is in. So all the classes, a team, a bus. So one student can generate a lot of notices. We just want to put that out so people know that you may have been exposed in this location, check your symptoms. So that is what we're doing to notify folks. As of our cases, we were, last count, 34 cases confirmed staff and students since we started school, which is actually less than we had last year. It's still a pretty high number, but less than we had at the same time last year. And those are confirmed cases. There's a lot more home tests that can be done at this point. That's why it's hard to track and put a dashboard on. So those are things we still ask that, you know, parents, just watch for symptoms, keep your children home Wednesday. And you can use the Positive Case Reporting Form to report a positive case to our nurses. And you can call our COVID hotline as well if you have questions. So is it counted as a confirmed case if someone tests positive at home and tells? Yes, we do count that as confirmed positive. So not exactly, we want to be completely out of it. But positive, well, in a good sense, is that we're not seeing any unusual or mutations or symptoms is what the Health Department is telling us to look for. In cases where we have an outbreak that's affecting more than 10% of our population and affecting operations, that's when they will come in and maybe offer some additional strategies, partial closures or additional mitigations. But at this point, I think there is a big sense from the VDH and from CDC that they're backing away from disruptions to the K-12 setting especially. So I'm really seeing that at the state level when we're talking to our public health coordinator. But we do have other concerns that are creeping up. So, and I did want to make this plug too. The rappahannock, rappahannock Health Department does have updated booster doses available, and they have different BAC clinic sites. And those happen, I think they said, every Monday. Well, it's different in these different sites. So it's different now too because the hospitals aren't full right now. So it's not as severe as it was a year ago. Good thing to know.
Yes.
Be grateful for.
Me too. Oh my gosh, we could be here, we're so excited. Again, something to still watch for. And if you have questions, of course, you can call the nurse or talk to the Health Department. They've been super helpful. And yeah, so I'm really feeling the sense that we're approaching endemic level. That's what the talk is at the state. But we're not there yet. So we're just going to have to wait till they get those metrics. But it feels that way, at least in a K-12 setting, which is nice to see. However, so as we had probably thought, as we had the disruptions and all these up communications in place and masking and distancing, and we're really careful about sharing germs, we are seeing some adverse effects with breakthrough illnesses and more severe reactions, I think. So two health concerns we have right now, hand, foot, and mouth disease. So we have quite a bit of that. It is a common viral illness in children, number of five. It spreads through direct contact. Through the viruses, can be passed on surfaces. Causes fever, delays sore throats in the mouth, rash on hands and feet. So that's something we're looking for. We've had quite a few cases. So those things are things that we continue to report to the Health Department. And they give us, and we have to notify classrooms if that's affecting them. But here's a more rare one, imputigo. And we are seeing a lot more cases of that. And that is pretty serious. So this is one that we are very concerned with. And it's an uncommon type of Group A strep. And generally speaking, it's a rare reaction to the strep virus. So you see scarlet fever, for instance, would be one. This is another one. So it goes beyond just the nearedyed strep throat. So it spreads by direct contact with skin lesions. And it has severe rash and lesions that pop up, and they start as blisters. And then they can, as they mature, as they heal, they almost look like a ringworm. So it's something to look for if you have a strange, if your child has a strange rash that maybe came after a strep throat infection. We aren't watching this. We have had cases of this. And it can be very concerning. So please see your child's physician and seek treatment. And then, of course, you can call the nurse if you have any questions. And then we also have our School Based Wellness Center, thank goodness, where you can get diagnosed as well if you think that this may be an issue. So those are two things we're watching closely at the elementary school. So other health concerns, monkeypox. I bring that up because people see a rash on their kid and with all the news coverage of monkeypox, oh no, it must be that. Our Public Health Coordinator will say, no, remember, what is common is still common. And in a school setting, monkeypox is very, very, very low risk and very uncommon. So the symptoms of that, fever, chills, headache, muscle aches, backache, tiredness, swollen lymph nodes. And then the risk factors are listed here as well. But that is very close contact and prolonged, face-to-face contact. And then also, it can be through touching lesions, bodily fluids, or clothing or linens that have been in contact with infected persons. So again, school settings generally, and even the general public are very, very low risk, according to our Health Director. But please see your physician and seek treatment if you have any contact with allergic symptoms. But thank you for your support. As we continue to keep our schools healthy and safe. And parents have been doing a really great job, really, about keeping their students home, notifying us, asking questions about COVID and other things. So our nurses are still very busy.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Now, my question, I do have one. We typically have this as a standing item on the board agenda. Would we like to continue to keep a Well Check with that? Or is that something? I think it's a good idea because I think when people see a lot of, until we're not sending out any contact notices and things, I think it just is, just little details of what you said, just what to look out for, not just COVID-wise, but you know, as we're together, I feel more comfortable keeping it on.
We're not reporting. VDH doesn't want reports from us any longer?
No, not in special cases where we had to report every single case before. The only time they want us, I mean, we can always call them if questions, or we have this case, you know. But as far as reporting cases, not us. It's 10% of the population. Or if we see a very strange increase in severity of symptoms, that might be a mutation or an outbreak that we cannot contain, that's impacting operations. So if we have a great number of staff that that we couldn't operate because of COVID, they want to know about that too.
So a monthly report is good for transparency.
I think for transparency.
But I mean, people should know VDH is not concerned about our data unless it's something extreme.
Yeah, less than that. Which is good news. We like that. That's a jam, but I'm happy to keep it on. So yeah, just that's. And that concludes the superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Moving on to reports from Headwaters representatives.
Yes, I did have the chance to meet, to meet with Mrs. Ginobili now. She's married. And I have, I'm going to actually look for it on my computer because my phone is on battery. So I don't know. But yeah, we've had a busy summer, both of us, and did not get to meet in person until this month. So it's nice to see each other face-to-face. Yeah, so the biggest news is that Headwaters is going to have their first-ever harvest festival on Saturday, October 1st, from 10 to 5:00 at Eldon Farms. It takes the place of the Taste of Rappahannock. It's their main big fundraiser. Tickets are available, as well as sponsorship, at the Headwaters website. It'll have food for sale, lots of fun activities and entertainment for all ages. Babigee will be playing, and Goldtop County Rambler's. And the students from the Headwaters Summer Course will be performing as well. So yeah, there's going to be a silent auction and an antique tractor show and other fun things. There's some really cool artwork designed by an alumna. It's this cool cow with flowers. It's not, it's really neat. So the schedule of events will be on their social media and on their website. But you can get your tickets ahead for this time of break. And there are some free tickets available for those indeed. Should be fun. After school, started last week. And this semester, there are 68 kids enrolled. They're doing it semester, rather than quarterly this year. There's arts and crafts, puppet making, Lego robotics, sports, and a section of Girls on the Run, which is training for a 5K run in November of a bunch of girls in elementary school. And then there's a two-day week partnership with Totality Martial Arts in Sperryville. Students will take, they take a separate activity bus to their martial arts classes in Sperryville. All, seems like things are going mean well. And this year, there is a fee, a student, a fee of $150. And there are scholarships available of quite a few kids to advantage of that. But that might even help with attendance with regular attendance in the program. There are the Educational Enrichment Grants, the EETs, that they're open now. One grant's already been awarded. And Mrs. Ginobili is going to visit teachers this month in both schools to promote the program. It's a great program that's ongoing. REED is now also up and running, and there are 15 trained volunteers now. There are 11 students enrolled now, so we're ready for when we capture the data from the PALLS testing that happened with our second graders. I think it's targeting second grade, but the kids who we're really hoping can catch at that early age. And then the Starfish Mentor now, there are seven pairs. And several of the mentees graduated last year. So they're particularly unique for young or older male mentors. If you know any guys who'd be interested in being mentors, who'd be good mentors, please spread the word. It's a great program and really impactful. Headwaters is also going to start their strategic planning cycle this fall. And there will be community stakeholders and on their team. And they will coordinate, of course, with our comprehensive plan to support us on our road to remarkable. with our comprehensive plan to support us on our road to remarkable. So that's that. And it's always, always good to see.
Thanks for that. Sixty-eight is a good number.
Yeah. It's great, and it's for the whole semester.
Right.
It's nice, the expansion of the program too, there's something for everyone.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Grimsley, do you have any update from Mountain Vista?
Sure, we did meet. As you know, Mr. Grove is the Mountain Vista Governing Board Chairman this year.
Oh, I would.
And I'm the executive superintendent of that board. So we had our HICOP meeting last month, and it was, it was great. Kelly Huff, the executive director, gave an update about where we were in the data, much as Ms. Ellis did tonight, and also about other indicators that are in the strategic plan for Mountain Vista. There are quite a few goals there to especially increase the, in equity, in the area of equity, to make sure we're increasing access to minority groups of students in different school divisions. We would like to see that number increase. Although rappahannan, believe it or not, is doing really well in that area most years, so that's, that's pretty neat to see. There's quite a few things on the agenda for our next meeting, which is actually this Thursday, and that is the Joint Governing Board Meeting and the Academic Advisory Board Meeting. So that's where they're planning out any curriculum changes, we can talk about budget, there's going to be some student spotlights at that meeting. So there's a lot of good things to come. I know there's a TRIP plan for the ninth graders, our current year ninth graders, who will be eligible to apply to Mountain Vista for their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade years. So that TRIP will happen, I believe, in November, to go to the campus for prospective ninth grade students who wish to apply. So that's in the works as well. And that's.
Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment, is anyone would like to address the board this evening?
Hi, I'm Steph Bigger, and I just wanted to introduce myself here, as having the honor of being the new chair of Headwaters Foundation. So I have the honor of working with you guys, and the privilege of working with Brittany and her staff, so any ideas, complaints, send them my way, because I'm eager to, to do whatever we can to work together and to make the best of it possible.
Well, welcome. I mean, it's a great, great time, and great organization, and it's been a great relationship. So yeah, welcome. You're going to have a great ride.
Yeah, usually I'm up here, you know, cheerleading, dream fleet, so I'm ashamed to do that.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great news.
Yeah, it is. Thank you. Is anyone else this evening? All right, moving on, is there any new business? Any requests for future agenda items? Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is the 11th of October, back in the same very room, I think, is our plan. And Mr. Rubin has a motion to go into closed session.
A move that the board convened a closed session for the fall purpose to discuss a concerted appointment of staff or coaching position, classified positions, and a resignation of a coaching position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, subsection 8, subsection 1.
We have a question, Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. Home day drive.
I am.
I need a post-it note. So we're going to be going into closed session, we're going to retire to that little room across the hall, we'll be back in five minutes, and then we will conclude our business tonight. If you want to hang around.